Alright everybody, we're gonna get started. I have not a gavel, so we'll just like politely wrap on the table. Was that good?
Great job.
We were talking earlier about like gavel is a pattern or maybe one or two from like... So this meeting and I think a quarter of education will come to the board. The first quarter of business is to approve the agenda received in the screening. And I get a question. Second. It's on paper. And then we would like to approve the September minutes of the business. Any questions that have been sent to Pat? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do you have a second?
Right, board members, have a couple of recognitions to do today. They're always the best part of the agenda. I want to start with our principals. If our principals that are here, you guys come on up. Just get you out of here in front of everybody. But you'll need to see us.
We got calls.
Alicia.
I was.
And this, as you know, is...
Everybody.
This is our distinguished group of principals. You all know them. I have learned to have great respect for them in the past years just studying about them. I learned a great deal about what's important in their schools. And I've gotten to see that in action since joining this team in March. But each year, three national associations of principals recognize it. October is National Principals Month. And so throughout the course of the month, we've mentioned these in meetings to express appreciation. But there's no words really that can explain the work that they do. It is without question, I think, the most difficult administrative job that you can hold in a school system by far. So you can see anything we do in our office, the day-to-day demands that our principals have. And trying to find good principals throughout the nation is one of the most difficult problems that school systems face. We don't have to try to find them. We have excellent people who want to be principals in our system. And we get the best of the best. And that's what you see here with our principals. We have eight. Next year, we'll be adding one more to this team to have nine. But I wanted to recognize them all and then offer an opportunity to give any comments you would like to the board to recognize their great, great work for National Principals Month.
Yeah, you guys are all awesome. We are scared of school. Steve, do you school? Just one. But seriously, we, you know, as a product of this school, so first Ms. Humphries was my teacher at the seventh grade math.
I was 12 years old.
I was not a star student. But, you know, the connections that we've had, you know, working with y'all, both as a parent and then just in the community, you guys are just unbelievable. And I know from talking to other folks in the community that y'all are in high demand and they would love to have y'all because they have room for you in their school system as well. And we're just glad that we've been able to attract y'all from the various different places that y'all have been, and all the experience you've given to us. And we could not be more pleased with all of you and the role that you play in the life of our students. So thank y'all so much, we appreciate it.
I'd like to read a part of the proclamation the governor made earlier this month to recognize this month. This is just a piece of what their expertise has to be to be a principal. And she says, "Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts and facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, our most valuable resource." That seems like a lot. I think that speaks well to what they do for us. And so she concludes by saying, "The state of Alabama recognizes outstanding elementary, middle, and high school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contribution to the profession." And exemplary is a word I would use with this group. So congratulations, join me, congratulate. Now, I'd like to ask Tanya and her entire team, Roger, your entire team, to come on and join us. Board members, as you know, this distinguished group is the Liberty Park Middle School Team. And earlier this month, to no surprise to me today, they were notified as being a Blue Ribbon exemplary school, which is defined in the state as those who are in the top 15% of the state in English and math scores. And we're much higher than that, but that gets you in the mix to be selected. And so they continue a long tradition of Blue Ribbons in our school. And so we wanted to meet out here today, this school that's about 10 years old now, to celebrate what I think is a momentous achievement. I'm honored to get to be just a part of this and get to see some view or view as well to the staff. And you know what a blessing it is to be a part of this team. It comes with 10 years of hard work. And this most recent recognition just exemplifies what's been happening at our school. So Tanya, I wanted to give you an opportunity to offer a few words about this team as well. But I want to share with you that there are 349 schools in the United States that are selected for the Blue Ribbon. And we are one of five in the state. And this is our third year in a row in Vestavia City Schools that we've recognized the Blue Ribbon Schools.
Well, first of all, as I made the announcement to our whole student body a few weeks ago, this doesn't just happen overnight. And so, you know, we had Casey Pierce, the former principal, to come because, you know, she, this school is 10 years old. And so a lot of the things I inherited as a second-year principal, she started. So we wanted to also compliment her on the groundwork, the foundation she laid. Because when I came aboard, there were already in place some phenomenal faculty members. And I inherited a wonderful group of educators who, not only, they're, I believe, some of the best in their subject matter, but they have the heart for what you need in a middle school teacher. And that's very hard to find. So thank you, Ms. Pierce, and thank you, Roger, who is, we're partners of crime. And we just, we love being here, we love being a part of this. And this is just, it's an award, not only for the school, for our students, but for the whole community. You know, when you have people who come here corporately, who get moved, and they say, "Oh, my goodness, I just saw, you know, Blue Ribbon School of Excellence," you know, and it just, it's a compliment to the entire Vestavia community. So thank you for celebrating with us. It's been the month of Blue Ribbon, and it's continuing this week. And then we will go to Washington next week to receive the, and Dr. Freeman's going to join us. We will receive the official Blue Ribbon honor, and we just can't wait to bring it back and share it with all of you. So thank you for partnering with us for 10 years, and the last five years, and since I have been principal, it has been an amazing two years. And I can't wait to see what the next few years bring us. But this is a fantastic place to be and also work. Thank you.
Oh, I would just like to say, you guys are fun. You know, the Pat, I've gotten to come out here recently, we came up to a luncheon and stuff, and, you know, largely lots of times when we're doing this, we're up here, we're gabbling in, we're gabbling out, and I don't, we don't get a chance to engage, you know, the teachers. And so coming out last week, when I had a chance to kind of sit down and just visit with some, with the faculty, and then this week, standing over there, just chatting beforehand, you've got some great team members. And as a parent who has a child that just matriculated out of middle school, middle schoolers are not the easiest students ever. And so it takes a special wiring for you guys to do what y'all do. And we're very appreciative of that special wiring. And y'all seem to have that attitude and personality down just great to interact with our middle school students. So we could not be prouder of what y'all have done and look forward to what's ahead. So thank y'all so much for all this work.
I'd like to share with you one quote that Tanya included in the 17-page epistle that she put together for the Blue Ribbon Award. But a couple of things from the motto that stands out is the concept of leadership and service. And that's pervasive in our system, you guys know all that. And I think that's fantastic. But I love this quote that describes this group and the 10 years of excellence that this group has had. Because there are a lot of roots that come with a Blue Ribbon. That thing just doesn't happen overnight. And so you just keep building, you can get better. But this is what she put in there, and it's a quote by Andrew Carnegie. "Teamwork is the ability to work together toward a common vision, the ability to direct individual accomplishments toward organizational objectives. It is the fuel that allows common people to attain uncommon results." Thank you guys for uncommon results today. This is a fantastic and remarkable achievement. Congratulations. Now, we have a very interesting agenda, but if you need to move on this time, you certainly can. We will understand. Okay, get minus five as a financial statement.
Good afternoon. In your board packet, you have August into September, financial reports and check registers for your review. I would like to make a few comments on the September comparison report. It's the budget actual comparison report that you have. I would like to note that our local revenue was 7.8% above budgeted revenues for the year. That was our adware and sales tax revenue. This was offset by a 5% budget increase in expenditures and transfers out. The net effect of these items resulted in excessive revenues over expenditures for the year of about $550,000. Our ending fund balance is $37 million, which is about six months of operating reserves. So one month of operating reserves is about $6 million. And that's what the state requires us to keep. So we are well over that amount with six months in reserves. The information in the September statements are preliminary numbers. There will be some small changes for accruals and revenues and expenditures for accounts payable in order to prepare for the audit. So you'll see a little bit of change, but it shouldn't be too dramatic. And all four bank accounts have been reconciled as of 9/30/18. Does anyone have any questions?
Members, I would recommend that you approve the financial statements for August and September 2018.
Do you prefer a different recommendation? Do we have a motion to approve? Second. On paper?
Item six, I would recommend the board approve the consent items related to out-of-state overnight field trips, surplus property.
Do you prefer a different recommendation? Do we have a motion to approve the consent items? Second? Any questions? On paper?
Item seven, business. First recommendation is regarding renovations at the new middle school, package B, and I would recommend the board approve change order number one with Blaylock Building Company Incorporated and the additional amount of $236,094 for renovations, building addition and renovations for item six.
Do you prefer a different recommendation? We'll take some questions here in a second. Do we have a motion to approve? Second? Just a little commentary.
Yes, I brought in experts to give us some background. There's Martin, Brendan Bellis here on HPM. If you can give the highlights as it relates to contingency in the contract that led us to this point, Brendan, that'd be good.
Okay. So within the contractor's contract, we have owner contingency allowances and quantity allowances. This change order amount would have put us over the amount of owner contingency allowance within the contractor's contract and would have zeroed it out. So what we've done is we're applying this towards a program contingency that we've allotted outside of the contractor's contract. We have a contingency amount within the program budget. This is being applied to that as well within our program contingencies. So our program contingency to cover this, we didn't want to zero out those owner allowances to bring them to zero or use any of those other allowances that were allotted for specific things.
What did you just say?
We got funds to pay for this, but then the program contingency.
Take none of one bucket, so the other.
Yeah.
Says the bid amount includes a certain amount of property contingency. That essentially has been used up. You can give some specifics to what, what are some of those things that use that up? But then in our programming and budget, we add additional contingency for incidents that may come up. We are now into the program contingency now. So maybe just some highlights of the major items that have used up the bid contract.
Yeah, so we still have some remaining in that, but this is a $250,000, $280,000 change order, so it would have zeroed that out. So some of the items have been used of that, some electrical items that were found to be existing that had to be relocated so we can install ductwork that weren't known before we ripped the ceilings out. A lot of underground plumbing issues where we, until we dug up the slab, and had to relocate some items that were unforeseen. And so there's been items like that that have popped up that we've applied towards this owner contingency that have taken it closer to zero, but we're still preserving some and applying this to that program contingency amount. In the owner contingency amount, we still have about, I believe, about $40,000, $50,000 in that amount. And then program contingency-wise, we have, I believe, about $300,000 remaining in that for our total program contingency.
The positive is we're finished tearing things up, and we're starting to build in a facility that's old and in a renovation. These are not surprising things. I anticipate likely at least another change order with a few items that I know are not on this current one that relate to the demolition pieces of it. But I think we're out of the major unforeseen.
Yes, a lot of these are a result of unforeseen that if you were to catch them before, you would essentially have to tear out these components and spend the money early before the project bid to explore and catch them. So you're catching them as the project goes in some of these instances, and they're somewhat anticipated in a renovation of this scale, but that's why we allotted the contingency amounts we did for this project.
How much was contingency in the contractor's?
For owner contingency, we had about $200,000 total. I mean, in allowances overall, we have about $400,000, but about $200,000 of that are allotted for specifically.
On paper?
Item B, I recommend the board approve change order number two with T.E. Stevens and the additional amount of $63,946.86 for renovations for the new middle school, package A, site and demolition work.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second? So a little commentary on this?
So this is the last change order to close out the site package. This, we used allowances up on that project, this gets into our program contingency in a similar manner, but recovered that total like I just gave you, remaining is with both of these change orders accounted for. This was unforeseen during the site package, got back there digging, found existing old clay lines for a sanitary sewer that we had to replace, some rock material that we had to get rid of, things like that that we dug in the ground for scenes to make the site suitable for building.
Questions? On paper?
Item C, I recommend the board approve naming a future strength and conditioning facility at Vestavia's High School in honor of Coach Peter Brash.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second? Give us some commentary.
I will. I'm going to ask our distinguished councilperson, Rusty Weber, to help us a little bit with this.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. This is an effort by some former students and members of the community to privately raise funds to build a new strength and conditioning facility at the high school. Not only will it provide state-of-the-art facilities for our student athletes, but also free up some spaces being used now for those wet rooms for other potential uses. So just like to thank Dr. Martin, Dr. Freeman, and all the board for allowing us to make an attempt at this. And Coach Brash has been an assistant basketball, football, track coach at the high school for many, many years. He's a behind-the-scenes guy, very, he's an unsung hero for sure. And I think that this is a way to honor him in a fashion that has not been done before, to recognize his contributions to our school and this community. And I thank you for consideration.
Well, man, as part of our work that Dr. Martin and I are doing with a long-term capital plan, that we are addressing student enrollment now, we've got that in place relative to then look at the existing facilities we have and knowing what we need to do to mitigate any problems in the future. We also want to change and improve academic programming, which includes anything that can be related to career technical, to performing arts, to athletics. This is a piece of what will be a larger picture that we'll bring to you at some point in the course of the school year about where we're heading. But the great benefit of this is there's an effort privately funded. That being said, as the board required on that policy, that you name all facilities that are owned by this board. So that's the background of the recommendation.
Any other questions? Okay, on paper?
Item D, I recommend the board approve the name to Dr. Alicia Huntsberger's employment contract.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Have a second? Any commentary?
Well, Dr. Huntsberger completed her doctoral program in August, I believe, and so we started on her after. And so we got finally, it makes it official, it's not official till the State Department says so, right? So she's official now. You want to share with them what your dissertation was on?
Actually, it was on Principal Effekins. So we actually read legal theory, and I'm presenting at a conference next week. So the main thing that's most important to principals is relationships. And so we interviewed principals around the country that are at the Principals of the Year and talked to them about what they may be effective and what helped them to get to where they need to be, what can help move their schools along. And relationships and collaboration and shared leadership are all the top points.
On paper?
Item E, I recommend the board approve modifying the school calendar for a two-hour early release on April 18th to allow new staffs to meet.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
April 19th, this is Friday, about particularly week, which we have designated in our calendar as a weather day. And we've not had to use those largely because of the state when we release, usually it's a emergency order, we don't make a date up. So we chose this as, we thought the designated day, we finished assuming that you approved recommendations in March for the transfer of employees and spin opportunity to get them together with their new administrative teams.
So it's been the first time that Dolly Ridge and East and West and the future state is all being together.
And you've just shot a blizzard of investors. Guaranteed.
Any additional questions? On paper?
Item F is related to a recommendation in September for board policy 6.15, student searches. You had in your agenda package, the yellow highlighted area that was the proposed recommendation, and that was tabled to get further clarification about the wording. And so what I bring to you today is not a recommendation, but it's, we simply do not act under this recommendation. We leave the policy as it is without that language included. We think we have a clear policy, it doesn't create any confusion, and so that, we'll put that matter to rest.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Motion to approve? Second? Any questions from you guys?
This was when you were out.
Yeah.
And this chair, we decided, and stuff like that.
That's right, I appreciate that. I'm glad that we're just keeping things named and flows are very limited.
Very limited. And we talked to a number of people involved, association of school boards, some internal people, as well as law enforcement, and that sort of guy, Dr. Freeman, in this recommendation.
The main thing that was well pointed out in the board meeting is that the board did all the past policy that would constrain the principals, such principals from being able to do their work into used evidence in appropriate ways.
We talked our way through this and covered all of it. On paper?
Okay. Item G is AASB, candidate selection. You all have to select a delegate and an alternate delegate for this.
No, Steve Bendall. Hey, Steve, help your watch.
Does anyone want?
I've done it for five.
I've done this a lot.
In the annual convention in December, it's in Birmingham. And it is a delicate piece that the delegate has to do.
It's December 5th through 7th. Okay, I'll take it and then you want? Me and Steve.
Item eight, I would recommend the board approve the Personnel Actions Act.
You've had a chance to review the Personnel Actions and heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Second? Questions? On paper?
Board members, we have two minutes to read the reports today that I would like to share with you. I have asked Dr. Rainey to start us off with Student Services Report. While she's getting that prepared, we'll share with you that a piece of this report is required reporting to you through the SIR, School Institute Report Summary. So it's a piece of it, but I wanted to share a more comprehensive review of the work that goes on in Student Services.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I come in this afternoon to share with you a report on student services. And when we think about student services, we work collaboratively with schools, families, students, and community partners to support behavioral and academic success for every child while promoting a safe learning environment. And so this afternoon, we're going to look at student services through a safety lens. We want to promote healthy relationships, and we want to look at safety from three different lenses. We want to look at it through the mental lens, the emotional lens, as well as the social lens. When we think about our students, what are we doing in the Vestavia Hills to support our students? How are we supporting them? In student services, we really think about giving students what they need. And when we think about our strategic plan, and we think about the multiple paths to a bold future, every child does not succeed in the regular educational setting. They need something different. And we have that here in Vestavia Hills for them. So far, in the first nine weeks, we served five students through our homeless program. We served six through homebound, 22 through our virtual school, 12 through our vision school, and one through our non-puded division school. We have nine registered nurses in our district. One of them is devoted to special education students. The other eight serve 345 healthcare plans daily. So our school nurses are very busy making sure that our students' healthcare needs are met. We have 19 counselors and one social worker. They've been very busy, and they do a variety of things. But this afternoon, I would like to just highlight two things. The FAFSA opened October 1st. I think this speaks to how our community is very college-oriented. This is amazing. We've already had 53 of our high school seniors complete this FAFSA, which is 10.2%, and we're already higher than we were last year at this time for students who have completed it. Also, five counselors have attended the update on the Cooter. Also, five counselors have attended the update on the Cooter, which is our career assessment tool. Our IT department has migrated everything to clever to log in, and our middle school students have already begun work on their four-year plans. When we think about attendance, as of our 20-day report to the State Department, we're at 97.11% on our attendance rate, which is very good. And you can also see the breakdown from each school. I won't go over that in detail. When we think about attendance, there are multiple measures for attendance. We have our average daily attendance, and that's just basically how many children show up to school every day. We have our truancy, and that's those students who are missing without permission. And then finally, we have chronic absence. And chronic absence is 15 days or 10% of school. When we think about chronic absence, chronic absence is excused absences, unexcused absences, as well as suspensions. All of those count towards our chronic absence, and that will be important as we get a little further into the presentation tonight. When we think about a safe and nurturing environment, we have a couple of things that I want to highlight. We have Lear and me at a couple of our schools, and that's based on Franklin Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. We also have CI3T in every school. CI3T is a comprehensive, integrated, three-tiered model of prevention. Every school, I mean, every student is screened three times per year as part of this process. Administrators receive tips weekly just to remind them and bring to the forefront the things we're working on. And the tip here that I have that I'm sharing tonight was a couple of weeks ago, and it said this week, look to reinforce students who are consistently meeting expectations. Remember the quiet students, who are consistently on time and ready to learn. Give them a pat on the back. So they receive tips like this each week, just reminding the teachers, bringing it to the forefront of things we want to encourage with positive behavior. And now, as we think about our schools, how are we supporting our schools through student services? One of the ways in which we're supporting schools is that we have a new format for our alternative school administrative committee meetings. And it makes it more efficient, and also it provides a quicker intake for our students who are being referred to alternative school. We use Google Hangouts Meet and Gauke Sign for this process. Typically, whenever a student is being referred to alternative school, they would have to be out of school suspended for a few days while the administrators came together, looked at everything and made the decision. This allows us to do it much quicker. We can dial in, we can do it electronically and sign it so that students aren't having to spend time out of school waiting on administrative decisions. So not only is this what's best for the child, we never want a child, if we can help it, to have to be at home without supervision or without instruction. However, sometimes that's necessary because certain behaviors we can't have at school. They have to be removed. But this allows us to provide for a quicker intake, which also reduces our number for chronic absenteeism, since we know suspensions also count towards that number. We provide services through, we provide services to our schools. Thirteen of our 19 counselors attended the Alabama Counseling Association Annual Conference. Our state social worker also attended the state social worker conference. Our lead nurse has attended the state lead nurse workshop. We've purchased new, two new AEDs for schools, and we've updated the batteries and pads for all schools. We have at-risk tutors that we provide to the elementary schools, and this year, we're going to provide Naviance to the high school. Naviance equips students with the tools they need for post-secondary success, and one of the main benefits for having Naviance is the electronic transcripts. We have a focus on communication in student services. We, our desire is for it to be transparent, reciprocal and consistent. We've had district counselor meeting, we've had our district nurse meeting, and we've also had our district teacher meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page. We've also conducted our trainings through student services. Aaron's Law and the Jason's Flat Act are mandatory. Jason's Flat Act is for suicide prevention, and Aaron's Law is for sexual abuse prevention. We also received a grant for life skills, and some of our middle school teachers were trained, and they're implementing this at the middle school, and it addresses drug use, alcohol use, violence and tobacco. Which leads us into our PRIDE survey. The PRIDE survey is quite a lengthy report, and I've tried to condense it for you tonight. The executive report is 38 pages, and the standard report is 207 pages. We won't be here all night, I've condensed it. The purpose of the PRIDE survey is to meet federal and state requirements for reporting for districts, but it also helps us to inform our decisions, not only at the district level, the school level, as well as the state. It helps us to inform us. The PRIDE survey was administered in March 2018. The PRIDE survey is given to students in 6th through 12th grade. It's given to all students, but it's a voluntary survey, so not every child took the survey. So you will see those who chose to participate in 2018, let me see if my little pointer will work. Well, I can't get it to show up. It's okay. In 2018, we had 2,787 students who chose to participate in the survey. That's very comparable to years past. You can see in 1617, 3,022 chose to take it. In 2015-16, 2,651 students chose to take it. And 2014-15, 2,663 chose to take it. So it is very comparable when we look historically at the number of students who took the PRIDE Also, looking from a historical perspective, one of the questions, or several of the questions on the PRIDE survey, it asks students for their use in the last 30 days. So when we look at the historical perspective and trends, we can see that in the safety, we're very blessed. You can see the numbers, they're low out of a 100-point scale. However, we want to make sure that we are addressing the needs that we have. And one of the most exciting things when I pulled this historical data was, if you will look, the gold or the yellow bar represents this past year. If you will look, that bar has been reduced. It's lower on their self-reporting of use in the past 30 days. It's down for high school, and it's also down for middle school. So we're real excited. I know we have life skills training in middle school that we believe helps with this. We have our Help the Hills Coalition who really work to inform the community. And then we also have our Help the Hills Student Group, and I will talk about that a little later in the presentation. But I think all of these things combined have probably contributed to this. It'll be interesting as we go next year and see what our trends, if our trends remain low. When we look at the past 30 days, you will see on this slide, cigarettes are in the blue, alcohol in the maroon color, marijuana in the green, and prescription drugs in the brown or tan. You will see that consistently 12th grade students reported the most use, and with only one exception, and that was 11th grade students were a little higher for prescription drug use. Alcohol was the top reported use, and marijuana was second. E-cigarettes have become a hot topic. They're new on the scene. They're new on the scene, and so they're not in a lot of the data that's collected in the PRIDE survey. However, there were a few questions, and I think this, this is important for us to notice. When you look at the use of alcohol, and you look at the use of e-cigarettes, the bar graphs look very similar. And I guess the thing that surprised me the most was that e-cigarettes are used more often than alcohol for students in 7th, 8th, 9th and 10th grade. We've been talking about the past 30-day use, now we're going to look at it from the past year. So in the past year, over 30% of seniors report they've used marijuana or an illicit drug. In the past year, 50% of our 12th grade students who took the survey said that they've used alcohol in the past year. And so the questions that I just showed you were what they were self-recording on usage. Now we're going to look at what their perceptions are. Students perceive it's easiest to get alcohol. If you'll look at the bottom bar, students across all grade levels agree that parents feel it's wrong. But then, I want to bring your attention to the slide here on the bottom on this side, and then the top slide diagonally across from it. Their perceptions, almost one-half of 12th grade students think and believe their friends think that marijuana is the least wrong to use, posing the least amount of risk. So I think it's interesting when we look at students' perceptions. And then finally, overwhelmingly, students perceive the risk of cigarettes as greater than e-cigarettes. When you look at the perception of cigarettes, almost all grade levels agree that it's a great risk. But then, when you look at the perception of e-cigarettes, the bar graph changes. And so when you look at that, you will notice that many more students believe that e-cigarettes are only a slight risk or a moderate risk. And when you compare that with their reported of usage, you will see cigarettes in the blue as compared to alcohol in the maroon. You see how much lower their reported using cigarettes is as compared to alcohol. But then, when you look at the colored bar graphs and we compare cigarette, I mean, e-cigarettes to alcohol, you will see that the bar graphs are pretty much the same. When and where were they using it? Students reported using alcohol and marijuana more than any other substance. This particular data did not include e-cigarettes, but what we know from earlier questions is more than likely, e-cigarettes and alcohol are about the same. Most students reported that they do not use alcohol or marijuana at school, so you wonder, where are they using it? They reported using alcohol most often on the weekends at friends' house. And they reported using marijuana most often on the weekends at a friend's house or in the vehicle in their car. And then, as we look at the things that contribute to them not participating in drug use, consistently the data shows that students who take part in school activities, make good grades, attend church or synagogue, and whose parents set clear rules are less likely to participate in drug use. And now, we've talked about what students say, what they say they're using and what their perception are, and that leads right into our SER report. And the SER report is the School Incident Report. And this report is used for state and federal reporting, and it also gives districts a comprehensive view of infractions, of what we're dealing with in regards to discipline in our schools. There's a lot of information on this particular slide, but I think it's important. Our SER report is recorded by infractions, and it's reported in numbers. So I don't want you to look at the percentages right now. I just want you to look at the numbers that are in bold. Let's start with 2017-18 on the far side. The black numbers at the very top, that's 7,129, is that, that was our student enrollment. That was how many students we had in our district last year. We had two students, or I can't say students, we had two infractions for alcohol possession. We had five infractions for assault, 32 for defiance disobedience, 10 for drugs possession, 14 for fighting, 8 harassment, 5 for inciting a disturbance, 5 for profanity and vulgarity, 5 for larceny and theft, 10 for threats intimidation, 11 for tobacco possession, and 45 for unauthorized absence. When you look at alcohol, drugs and tobacco combined, it makes 23 infractions. So our number one was unauthorized absence. Our number two was defiance disobedience, and our number three was drugs, alcohol and tobacco combined. To me, I want to really demonstrate how great our district is. Even though these are the things we addressed last year, Dr. Baker asked me to convert it to percentages, and I'm thankful that she did, because when we look at it percentage-wise, and again, it's reported in infractions, it's not reported by students. So in order to look at it from a percentage, we had to assume that each infraction was a different student, but that may not be the case. But even if that were the case, that would be worst-case scenario, all infractions were less than one-half of a percentage. That's amazing. And that says that we have a fabulous district for our students to be able to come and learn. They are coming, prepared to learn, and they know what the expectations are when they arrive at school. When we look at our SER infraction trends, you will see that defiance and disobedience, drug possession, threats intimidation, tobacco and unauthorized absence, they were trending upward, with our largest being in unauthorized absence. This is just another way of looking at the same information. I'll just move through that. That's what I discussed when I looked at trends. And now, we look at the consequences. So we looked at infractions. Now, what did we do about that? So if you will look at our in-school suspension, last year, we had 118 in-school suspensions. We had 27 out-of-school suspensions and 31 placements in alternative school. Again, that's not students. It could be one student who had multiple in-school suspensions. This is, 118 was the actual number of in-school suspensions that we have. Again, it speaks volumes to the quality of our district. When we look at our trends and consequences, you will see that our ISS placement was down, our out-of-school suspension was up, and all alternative setting placements were up. And again, as I spoke to earlier, when we're thinking about how we're changing our process for our administrative committee meetings, we're working to be able to reduce our out-of-school suspensions, since that does count towards chronic absenteeism. Now, we think about families. How are we supporting our families? We have eight registrars who have been busy serving families. We launched the School Locator on our website to assist families in verifying school zones. We have had 15 dual-residence meetings, and our registrars each month are using the Bear Student Report to verify residence. And that's a tool that interacts with United States Postal Service that allows us to track moves in our district.
What's a dual-residence meeting?
A dual-residence is basically a shared residence. You have, you have people who live in a home with a mortgage, you have people who live in maybe your leasing, and then you have people who are sharing their residence. And dual-residence are for those people who share residence. We provided 1,689 students with a flu vaccine. This is amazing. 26.1% of our total, of our total population received their flu vaccination at school. What a wonderful service to provide our families. And then, we have our Help the Hills Coalition, and it's, you know, they work to prevent and reduce substance use. And then, we also have our student team. Last year was the first year for our student team. They started the year with 34 students. This year, they began the year with 80 students. And so I can't help but believe that this has had an impact on reducing their self-reported usage of all substances from middle and high school. I really think it speaks volumes to what we have here in our district. We also have provided parent workshops. We've had a baking workshop at the high school, and then we had Keeping Our Daughter Safe was another event that covered a lot of current topics for families. We're working to expand our partnership with Impact Family Counseling. Every student at Vision receives counseling through Impact, but we're working to expand that partnership to be able to offer outpatient services for students while they're in school, so they don't have to check out of school and miss instruction to go somewhere else to receive those services. We're working to partner to be able to provide that in school. I want to leave you with this quote, "Good mental health is critical to children's success in school and life. Research demonstrates that students who receive social, emotional and mental health support achieve better academically. School climate, classroom behavior, on-task learning and student sense of connectedness and well-being all improve as well." Mental health is not simply the absence of mental illness, but also encompasses social, emotional, and behavioral health and the ability to cope with life's challenges. And that's what we're seeking to do through the Department of Student Services to work with schools, families, students, and community partners to be able to support every child and provide them a safe learning environment.
So on your initiative to reduce the out-of-school suspensions, are you trying to place them in alternative school or divisional school faster?
Yes, yes. So when a student has a certain behavior that, according to our Code of Conduct, requires an alternative school referral, we have a committee process. And so, the administrators that serve on that committee, we come together. We have a report. They share what the student did, why they would like to make the recommendation, and then the committee votes on, yes, that qualifies, or they may be able to ask questions to clarify and just collectively decide that, yes, alternative school is the best placement. And so, when you think about pulling a lot of administrators together with busy administrators that are running schools, sometimes it may take a day or two days in order to schedule that meeting for everyone to come together. That reduces the time because we're able to dial in through Google Hangouts meetings. We're able to dial in and have it more quickly so that the child can just go straight from the base school. Usually, it takes a day turnaround. That's our goal, to be able to do it within one day instead of having to spend two or three days out of school waiting on that committee.
Is the placement and also the going to the school?
Correct. Typically, any behavior that warrants a referral typically would go to alternative school. Usually, those committees give, just in this one nine weeks, we've only had one that we, we looked at and decided on a different placement.
What's the likelihood rate of people who refer to like alternative school? Do they tend to come back, or do we tend to have corrective action and then that?
Well, since I'm new to the State and Health this year, I can't really give you a historical foundation for that, but I can tell you, so far this school year, I've not had any return. So for just this year, that would be, no, we haven't had a problem. But historically, I can't speak to that.
How much longer do you have on your grant for the life skills?
I believe we have one more year. One more year, and we've had a great response in our district to the life skills.
How's the role of a state on 13th? Not necessarily the academic piece, because we have, we have a partnership, but you're having interviews in your schools.
I'm hearing things about CI3T. I see evidence of it when I'm in the schools. I hear the language in the hallways or in the classrooms. I see evidence posted around the schools where they're implementing CI3T. We just finished our first screening, so I'm hearing positive things from the CI3T implementation. Policy for CI13.
We don't have policies up there, but a pretty structured set of guidelines. I'd like to update you on all things related to transition to our following school year. Dr. Martin, Dr. Martin, cover a few items with you.
Dr. Martin, do we have a policy about orange ties?
Crooked orange tie?
Maybe we should call it orange ties.
With a blue suit.
I don't recall the style of hazing. Well, thank you for this opportunity to talk with you a little bit about the coordinated efforts around reconfiguration and in keeping with your football theme, which I assume the orange tie relates to. Had to press the online button. You can see here, there are a lot of moving parts to what we have been doing in terms of the efforts towards reconfiguration for next year. So November 27th of last year is what kicked off the restructuring of the system. You can see there, December 13th, so this is a timeframe taking us from, my hope here was that we would push the ball past the goal line leading to August 8th of next year. So you can see that it was December 13th where the Board of Education approved a restructuring plan. And so, what that plan entailed was having a 10 through 12 high school, ninth-grade center, two middle schools, one at the campus of Berry, currently Berry, and then we would have our five elementary schools where Dolly Ridge would come on board with purchase of Russian. February of 2018 was really the first of the meetings of staff, administrative staff, board staff, coming together. That creates Dr. Freeman and myself, coming together to have, start to have those initial crucial conversations around what this restructuring would look like and all of the minutia that would need to take place in order to make sure that was a success. You can see that in the middle there, I have our October 29th meeting, which is today, but at the same time, we have been having meetings really since July. Formal meetings where building administration, as well as board office staff, come together and have conversation around the ninth-grade center. And then also, K-5 meetings where all of the elementary schools have come together to talk about articulation, how we're going to move forward in the school year 2019, 2020. We'll continue to have those meetings through the spring, and then into the summer, our plan is to finalize the Berry construction, which will become the new visits, and then brush construction with the new addition, 12-classroom addition, which I'll speak to a little bit later in my facility updates. We have Dr. Freeman and Ms. Marlin also as part of this portion speaking through this.
All decisions that we make at State and Health are centered around our strategic plan. We have had a process in place, as Dr. Martin referenced, really since February, prior to their coming on board. We have begun that process in making sure that all of our planning has been strategic and aligned to the mission of our district, specifically creating safe and nurturing environments through our campuses and our buildings and our programs, and then programmatically curriculum, the multiple paths to both the future, knowing that once that we were able to reconsider where our students were heading school, what we could offer within those different opportunities. The process has been continuous and collaborative as we've made decisions regarding our reconfiguration, as well as our newly aligned schools. And alongside all of that has been our own parallel funding support and our ability to have the course be creative as we think through that. This whole collaborative process wouldn't have been possible if it weren't for the energy and the time that our administrative staff has spent, specifically the principals, as they've been out of their buildings to meet with us. We've consistently met across K-5 group. We've had the whole team together. Then there have been times when, for example, Jennifer Bailey and Brooke Brown have led a charge with a particular group of teachers around the curriculum program. There have been times whenever it's just been about construction and the facilities. So the whole process, though, has been strategic and continuous. And we're still moving forward. We have a scheduled December. We've already met multiple times with very specific outcomes. I think Patrick's going to show you that on the next slide, that our approach has been, we've called it the tactical approach, where we have identified all of the different areas that need to be addressed. As detailed as, will the ninth grade, for example, be in the high school yearbook? Something that maybe none of us would necessarily have at the top of the list, but we've tried to drill all the way down to every aspect of student life to have those conversations. And the process started under Dr. Mason, where literally we had tables with big pieces of chart paper sat around, and we had big topics, student life, safety, security, transportation, all of these areas around. And we just came around and in kind of a rural cafe setting, marked all these things down that we were just thinking about that we had to capture on paper. And then we strategically stepped back and worked through those in subcommittees, and sometimes the groups come together as a whole. Sometimes the work is best accomplished in small teams. But just to know that overall arching process and plan has been aligned to our strategic plan as we work to make these specific strategies.
And then you can see here, bedrock to this process has been this, wanting to make sure that there's compatibility across all of the schools, K through 5 to middle schools, making sure that the experience is a good experience for students going to the new ninth-grade center. I know one of the items that we talked about in one of our meetings was making sure that those students who walk out of visits as eighth graders do not feel like it's a turnstile. They just turn right around and walk back into the ninth-grade center that they just left. And I know that Dr. Burgess and his team are trying to make this a unique experience at this new ninth-grade center, and I'll speak to a couple of things on that a little bit later. Also, key to this is making sure there's as little disruption as possible. If you stop and think about that, that's a lot easier said than done. So we've given a lot of attention to that as well. Ms. Marlin spoke to, you know, there being formal meetings, informal meetings. I know that Dr. Aaron Dahl and I today even had a conversation just one-on-one. Sort of these different pods, pockets of conversation went around around this restructuring. And then, as Ms. Marlin mentioned before, we're using this tactical planning. I use the term tactical, and Ms. Marlin has given me a hard time since thinking this is sort of a covert operation type of scenario. If I could have come up with a better synonym by now, I would have. But you can see, I should have learned from Dr. Rennie. You can see here, we're using Google Drive. We all of us have access from building administration to board education administration. And so, what we're doing, working collaboratively through this process, is assigning different tasks so any one of the individuals working through this process can put a task up here that needs to be completed, that then they work together to assign, create timeline. And then also, as you'll note, the highlighted portion of this, we're checking this off as we go. So this is a good communicative tool for us working to move forward.
So we are going to discuss each of these separately. So we're going to start with the K-5 reconfiguration, and that, of course, speaks to on the other side of the stadia, our K-5 alignment from East and West, we come in K-5 schools, and then, of course, Dolly Ridge coming on board. We have established our end times, which we will share with you in just a moment. We are working with Mrs. Brown on our planning budgets and making sure that we're prepared to move forward with that. We had a wonderful open house on September 25th, and we were able to welcome so many of our community members in to see the beautiful facilities at Dolly Ridge. We are so appreciative of their partnership with us and allowing us in on that Sunday afternoon. We have had planning meetings with K-5 fine arts and librarians. Specifically, I pulled those out because we will have teachers, for example, who've never had for their fifth-grade students as art students, and we need to be sure that we have the right equipment in their facilities and that the teachers have the training that they need. Same thing with libraries. We have libraries that have been geared toward a particular grade level, and we're working through making sure that all of those are comparable experiences for our students. Working through a technology needs assessment to see exactly what the needs are at each of the buildings, security and ongoing risk assessments, especially as we look at a brand-new campus, of course, we have East and West, that we aren't, we haven't understood enough, but our new campus at Dolly Ridge. And Dr. Martin will speak to that as it relates to the visits campus. And then we're looking at our student life experiences and making sure that those experiences are comparable, that they are more similar than different across the K-5 schools in our whole district. And we're excited about having that aligned across the stadia. These are our start and end times for 2019, 20, 2020, and they will be across the district from 45 to 235.
What are they now? It's the same with the exception of Central, which Central, I think, is. Start and end time for Central?
2:50. We looked at what starting times we do across as we, Dr. Martin did an in-depth study at tracking times, averaging across, driving in different directions, and we agree that this was the best scenario to leave this as of yet for now. And then, of course, we can revisit that should we see that it's not working for us. But as you'll compare, we had to take into consideration this as we looked at the middle school and the high school start time and the ninth-grade campus start time, which we'll show you in just a few minutes.
The in-depth study was my wife saying, if you don't separate these two children, I'm going to pull my hair out. So I drove through the stadia to see what the times were.
Very scientific.
Very scientific.
Just for the record, I did drop off. I just don't remember what time I dropped off. Loser.
All right. In terms of high school and ninth grade, Dr. Burgess and his team came to our last meeting, and they had a series of slides that they wanted for us to talk around. And so, I pulled a couple of key concepts from those. Articulating curricular offering, shared student experiences, particularly in the areas of fine arts, athletics, CTE, which brings up the issue of transportation for students and making sure that if you're at the ninth-grade center, that they still feel very much a part of the high school, and then vice versa as well, that they accept those students and see them as a part of their school community. And then, a lot of discussion around culture, positive aspects to change, and then what are those items that their staff would feel as non-negotiables? So with that said, using that lens, a lot of similarities with the K through 5 center, but discussion around start and end times, budgets are being finalized, tall pegging conversation on cost centers and department budgets and what they will be looking at at the high school, and then also the ninth-grade center, where there will be crossover. Course offering and staff needs, which I spoke to earlier on curriculum articulation. Student life experiences were discussed once before. Technology needs and assessment conducted. I know that Ms. Brown, Mr. Howard, Dr. Burgess, Jeff Seeger's, have also done extensive walkthroughs of the visits campus to see where, what infrastructure needs may be appropriate for changes next year, but then also big picture going forward. One of the items that, and I think I've mentioned this before in a facility update, that Dr. Freeman has charged me with is to do an overarching facility assessment. And so, we've contracted with a third party to help us with that process. So when we talk about this being comparable, we're not just looking at those new facilities. We're also looking at the existing facilities to make sure that there is comparability across the system. And then, last but not least, I know that Dr. Freeman has asked Dr. Burgess if he would give an update, a report to the board come springtime. So that's something we're looking at as well. In terms of start and end times, you can see here, we are looking at the high school, 8:10 to 3:20, ninth-grade campus, 8:25 to 3:30, and then both of the middle schools would be 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock. Dr. Burgess, if you don't mind, but current high school's starting time is?
8:20 to 3:00.
And so, looking at, Kenny aside, I know I spoke earlier about looking at traffic patterns and whatnot. We have done traffic studies, analysis, and pretty in-depth review of the time it's going to take to get from one point of the community to the other or one campus to the other to make sure that, that apparently the different locations can get their students to these schools.
And Tyler, and we've discussed it more later, if there was a student in that grade that participated in, like, post-after-school athletics or something, those end ten minutes later is going to be that big a?
It'll be, take it up in your speaker.
Okay.
So they're wacky area.
They're on the front end and the back end. You've got to react to them now.
So you've had morning band or afternoon football, first period we ban, second period we football.
So it'll stagger to be able to get them from one place.
Got it.
And that goes back to the transportation piece. Again, I don't think we can stress the appreciation that we have for the building principals and their willingness to allow this to be a fluid process, to get creative at times, and see how this is really going to work, because, as I said, when you get into the minutia, this becomes very difficult. You know, for that student that wants to take a first-hour class that may not be accepted, I'm sorry, that may not be provided at the ninth-grade center, and then also get that student back to ninth grade, but then maybe to a sports team, back to the main campus. So, I mean, all of this has to, has to court case somehow. So, again, can't stress our appreciation.
So with the alignment of our schools and the rate figure of our schools, it, this does take some staffing need evaluation, and I have, we put together a timeline, so I've got in front of you, of where we've been as it relates to that and just some other key dates. Dr. Freeman has plans to share this information via video this week with our staff so they will hear all of this information for their planning purposes and their knowledge. And this month, he will be doing that later on before the week is out. And they have had an employee shuttle meeting with some key staff members to find out, you know, what are your concerns? What are some things that we can do to increase that as it relates to moving our employees' children across the district, as well as looking forward, and it, as it relates to which schools that their children might be attending if they live outside of district but work with us. We'll be revealing the start and the end times of each of those and giving the letter of intent, which is the, which really is going to be the opportunity for people to indicate their preference should they have to move between, I would like to stay at my school and teach a different grade level, or I would like to teach my grade level that I've been currently teaching, and I'm okay with moving schools. We have a trip planned on Friday to offer to these schools to meet with their staff. They've, not too many years ago, moved lots of staff, and so we feel like there's something that we can learn from them through their process. So we hope that that will help us even refine this greater.
So we hope that that will help us even refine this greater. November, we are going to continue the process of evaluating and estimating staff needs as it relates to our students that are in special education, as it relates to our students who are English language learners, as it relates to curriculum offerings at the ninth grade, as well as the high school campus. We're continuing to do that. And on December 14th, our teachers will have an opportunity to submit their letters of intent indicating, we're still working through the exact details of the process, that they will be indicating whether or not they would like to remain at their school, if that's a priority, or if teaching the seventh grade level is a priority, because we will have to move some staff. If you look at Central, obviously it's going offline. All of those teachers will be reassigned. The question will be, some of them won't be able to teach for fifth grade. So we will have to make some decisions about where those individuals will be teaching. And we'll be taking into account everything from their certification, to their appeal, to which other areas that they are most interested in moving into. Those will be due to us on January the 4th. Along that process, we intend to begin to look at the Liberty Park Elementary School principalship. We know that Todd will need to make some moves as it relates to his opening a new school. And so in our timeline, we will be taking into consideration those kinds of opportunities for us to look for a new principal at the school. All of this impacts our registration, as well as specifically kindergarten registration. Todd and I are working right now to determine where we'll hold kindergarten registration for Dolly Ridge. We think we're going to do it at the Central office and we'll, we'll work it on a plan, right Todd? To get that figured out because those parents come to the school for registration. So we've got to roll on some details for that. But we will be opening kindergarten registration and, as well as regular registration in the next coming months. And of course, all of this in the process, we'll also be looking at move management, which Dr. Martin's going to speak to in just a few minutes, regarding physically moving our teachers and all of the things that they have in their classrooms. There's a lot of stuff, if you've been in some of those classrooms lately. And so we're looking for, to hear a little bit more about that in just a minute. But that will be coming in the spring as well as getting a plan for that. And then of course, the new schedule will be revealed once we know more information to prepare us for the start of school. So there's a lot of things going on as it relates to that. Some of these are planned dates that we hope that we can meet, but some of these things are dependent on other things happening. And we are just working toward these as being our angles.
Jennifer, do the high school teachers fill out letters with Todd? Are they kind of?
Yes. We actually have, their certification of course is probably the most important factor in this. Cause we have some people who were certified only to teach to a certain grade level. And then we have some people that can only teach a particular content area when you get to high school. So we have, we're going to have three letters of intent, three different forms. There will be one that will go to the K-5 teachers on that side of the stadia, because they'll be making some requests for what they'd like to do. We will have a form that the high school will fill out with the ninth grade as being an option for requesting a transfer. And then we will have the regular letter of intent that will go out to everyone else who is not impacted directly by this. So it's a little different this year. Normally we do a letter of intent that looks the same across the district. We usually send that out around spring break, because we're not in this kind of a process. But all of that gets backed up. We will need the whole month of January, we think, to start that process. We also have accreditation happening in January. So we have a lot going on and we figured if we could go ahead and get that process going as early as December, where they'll start being able to fill that out and submit those to us, that by January the 4th or 5th, once we get those in our hands, we can start mapping everything out.
As one of the players, as you're saying, we talked about them throwing a letter of intent, it's the same grade level. Is that the Central teachers or is that all teachers at East, West and Central?
That's all teachers at East, West and Central. So we, on that side, those three schools will be filling out a completely different form than anybody else, those teachers will. Because on the form, and again, it's in process, so I didn't want to show it because it's a draft form. We want to wait till we go to Auburn and make sure we haven't missed anything in our, in our process. But the form has a place for them to put their certification. And then it has a place for them to make a request of, I would prefer to say, I've been teaching third grade for the last fifteen years. I prefer to teach third grade, but I'm willing to move. Because teaching third grade is more important to me than staying in my school. And then some people will mark, I want to stay at my school. And if I've never taught kindergarten, but that's where there's an opening, I'm willing to make that, that transfer into another grade level.
And then at the Central office, y'all are going to say these, based on, we're not going to mark, Ken and Todd have a draft.
Right. We've been talking about it.
I'm not touching.
To get a plan. But we feel confident that we're going to be able to make this as least disruptive as possible. Really, when you start counting the number of teachers that will be moved, it's not as much as it might seem at first. Now, of course, everyone at Central is going to be relocated. That's, that's where the largest number of changes will happen. But we have some people that are so excited about the chance to start to do something new and different. I just don't think we're going to have very many unhappy people. There will be a few, there always are. But we just don't anticipate this being as disruptive as it seems on paper or in my mind whenever I can't go to sleep and I'm worrying about it. I just know that a lot of this is going to work itself out.
And they will know which school they want to go on what day?
Right. Well, our anticipation would be that this would be late March, April, if we can make that deadline, that it would come before the board. And with the intention of having what you guys just approved for us, that half day, really two-hour early release is what it translates to, for us to be able to have staff meetings and that they would be notified several weeks prior to that, which staff that they would be on. We've already reserved, Todd and I have, the city hall. We already reserved a room there for his staff to meet in April. And I went ahead and did that, I could always cancel it if you didn't approve it. But I was afraid that we wouldn't have the space from now. It's a little unusual to not be able to be at the school, but we had so many of our teachers who were actually at the Dolly Ridge open house, because they were just interested to see what it was. And they loved it, they thought that the rooms were beautiful and the space was, was so perfect for teaching and learning. So that's our plan right now, that we would have that information back to the staff with a board action potentially at the March meeting, maybe we might have a call. We don't know what that will look like. If we can get our hands on those letters of request, letters of intent in January, we feel like that gives us plenty of time to map out and iron out any issues.
All right. So in terms of starting with the end in mind here, we're looking at with move management, we're needing a recommendation for a move manager to work there. So that means that we would have, we're looking at, so I think it's early February, February 1st. I've already had a chance to sit down and visit with several of the firms that have made moves with other school systems. So when Thompson moved from their former high school to the new high school, we had a chance to sit down and see what that experience was like. I know that Trust Bullets made similar moves, we're going out to Auburn and have a conversation with them. See Calum, I think was another that just finished a move here recently. So I've already had the opportunity and several of the administrators to, to talk with them, see what that process looks like. But the biggest part of that is going to be making sure that we have teachers whose classrooms aren't going to be moved, they're, they're explained to by the new manager just what the process is going to be. We want to make sure that there's a good level of comfort around that and join these are their lives, their, their classrooms, moving from one location to the other. So again, using that foundation of the least amount of disruption as possible, that, that is a focus, a key for me in doing so. We've also, I want to make sure I point out that third bullet point, been very blessed to have several of our community partners step in to demonstrate support and volunteerism. Basically, open arms, let us know what we can do. So that just gets back to one of the basic tenets of our strategic plan in terms of that great community support unparalleled that we receive. And so I've been having conversations with, notice up here, the trifecta of moves, our elementary schools, and then we have our Posits campus to the new Posits campus, and then the ninth grade to the new, or the former Posits campus. And so we've been having conversations, myself and several of the administrators around, what do we need to use a move manager for? What can volunteers assist us with? And then what can we do in general? So just know that there is a good plan, I think, formulating in terms of the move manager.
Were the funds basically from the original project or are they?
Sure, sure.
Cause every year I can get the building with an immense amount of time.
Right. So it cost them about nineteen thousand more dollars, but they moved one Alabaster High School to the other in four days. And I can't remember if that was Armstrong or Lambert, which one of those two moved the manager.
I could ask, is this a small task?
It feels small when everybody works together.
That sounds like a spoken. So thanks for that. Can you get that for us?
We're just representing the hard work of a lot of people today.
It's a large team effort. I appreciate the report. We'll bring you some more next semester and all that's going on. Want to give you just a real quick update on our, let's do our very fresh.
Yes, okay.
And let you know where we are with those projects.
Thank you. Move through this quickly, let me get, West cafeteria. Yes, I'll show you that picture up here. It's really coming together well. Congratulations to Ms. Hauser on that. Same thing with Cabo Heights. If you haven't seen the media center, it looks really good. So if there is a nail out of place, just know that Ms. Hauser and Dr. Hutsberger make sure that the contractors know it. So just very quickly, phase two, parking and rear, we were working through that process. You can see substantial completion, phase one, around the front of the building, July 31st. And then phase two, November 30th is when we anticipate substantial completion. In terms of our new Posits, Dolly Ridge timeline, you can see, we are anticipating getting the crush of the property June 15th. Notice what the contract says, substantial completion for the renovation at the Posits, so that'd be buildings A through F. We should get those substantial completion on the 17th. The 12 classroom addition, right now, we're anticipating July 22nd, so that being completed for substantial completion. The band and chorus room, which will be building G at the new Posits campus, August 7th. And then October 16th is when we're looking at getting the new gym base. In terms of the Posits middle school campus, you can see they started construction July 16th. I think Dr. Freeman referenced this earlier, ninety-five percent of the demolition work there at the Perry campus is completed this time. That is through buildings A through, A through F, F being the old building, E being the gym, the existing gym. The footings, foundations, all being core in the G building, which is band and chorus addition. And then plumbing and roughing is occurring in the kitchen there at building B. Again, this being a collaborative process, I do want to make mention of the fact that appreciate Ms. Hanson's work. We had a situation where with the band chorus room, last minute, as well as Brennan and Sean, last minute made some pretty significant modifications, all based on preference by the instructor. So it was really neat to see the teachers have a recommendation of how they would like to see that go here, last minute. And the architect, engineer, and our contractors able to make that happen. So that's really good. You're looking at the entrance into building A and then further down, this is where you step into B, which will be the offices, our office suite, as well as cafeteria. Just want to make sure, and this, Mr. McGee said that he would put this up on the website, but just want to make sure that you understand there's probably some conversation around, what are you going to do in terms of queuing and stack space? And then what's going to happen with Columbiana Road? And so these will be up there as well, but you can see there is a plan, we're working through that. That is current as of last week. Coming off of Columbiana, wrapping around the back portion. I do want to make, mention the fact that baseball and softball were in the process of our planning. That will take place. But that's something I know Dr. Freeman is working with the city on. And so just know that there is a plan, a lot of conversations going around and research being done in terms of what queuing and stack space looks like. For example, this is the current Posits campus down here. And you can see where the stack and queuing all takes place, 31 leading up to the middle school and then coming around the back of the school. So lots of conversations.
So drop office will be at the front, primarily that the new campus would just been stacked and done?
That's part of the conversation that's ongoing. I think there was an original plan, but after we've received some additional information, I know between Ms. Hanson, Dr. Freeman, HPM and Latham, that's some of the conversations going on. In terms of Dolly Ridge, can't express again how much I appreciate Dr. Aaron Dahl really serving in dual roles. I mean, six forty-five, if you could meet me at Dolly Ridge and he's there. So we're sitting now, I think it's what, thirty seconds from your house?
Yeah.
I wanted to say before that I knew this.
Can't make a board meeting on time.
I'm sorry, I brought it up. But you can see here, construction started on the 12 classroom addition, July 16th. You can see what the space looks like now. The different rounds of the building, the new space that we will have, this is a side rendering of what that will be. Same conversation over there at Dolly Ridge, just in terms of what the queuing and stack space will look like. So very similar to Posits, having a lot of conversation around how best to maximize our space on those campuses. And then also parking as well. Now, there is a playground up here, but the current, our most recent and most likely scenario, and this was Dr. Freeman's idea, bring this down, the playground down, which I think that, I thought that was very, yes. That's where we're at in terms of Dolly Ridge and new systems. So any questions on, and this will be on the website as well.
I want to give you a more detailed explanation of parking and queuing next semester in school development. What you're seeing there, throughout parking, we could, well, two hundred parking lots is that pressure.
And that's where that like island of trees is?
Yes. And the conversation right now is that that island would be an alternate to a larger package.
I appreciate that, that's a poor spirit of manipulation. For any Ms. Marlon, Dr. Mark, I'm just someone else. Lot of information that Dr. Smith has here.
So we will send out some information to parents and to our staff tomorrow. How's that review, what you can serve?
Anything else? We're turned. Oh, public comment, sorry. Sorry.
I didn't wrap.
Take your gavel away and forget everything.
Oh, there are a couple comments. If so, if they've named and you're aggressed and wanted your comments to, to thank you to do. All right, they're being done now.
Good job.